Good morning, everyone. If I could ask you to take your seats, please. Good morning and welcome to the Commission meeting room as we call to order this morning's special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners here on November the 20th, 2012. We welcome all of you. And I have the gavel this morning because this is a reorganizational meeting and so we have yet to elect the Chair of the County Commission for the coming year. And so as their clerk, our rules indicate that the clerk shall be the Chair until such time as the Chair is elected, which we'll do shortly. But to open our meeting today, we would call on the Reverend Geraldine McClellan of the Mount Pleasant United Methodist Church to open with a prayer. And if you'd all join me in rising and then we'll pledge allegiance to our flag following the prayer. So Reverend?
Let us pray. All-knowing God, we gather this morning to thank you for all of your blessings and to pray your guidance upon those who have been recently elected and those who will continue to serve as county commissioners. May their individual and collective lives serve the good of all, enlighten their minds with understanding and perception, that through their discussions and decisions they will be able to solve problems of the county and the people effectively. We pray that God grant them wisdom, patience, compassion, and a love for the task at hand. Help them, O God, as they move through their time of discernment for the good of all. That you strengthen guide and direct their thoughts and the people of God said. Amen.
Please join me as we pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Reverend for those good words and we thank you for being here today. At this time, the first order of business that the Commission does need to take care of though is to approve and adopt the agenda and this also adopts the consent agenda, which is purely authorization for the new Chair and Vice Chair to sign on the county's bank accounts along with a clerk. And so a motion would be in order to adopt the agenda.
It's been moved, Ms. Burgh.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the agenda. Are there any comments from the Commission first on the agenda? Mr. Manager, anything? Anything from the audience regarding the agenda this morning? Hearing none, those all in favor of the agenda being adopted as provided, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Sure it was adopted unanimously. Well, there's a number of people in the audience that have served here before. I do see Commissioners Chestnut and Commissioners Chestnut. We're happy to have, and I saw Commissioner Delaney come in a few minutes ago. There she is. We're really happy to have the students from PK Young here today. Former City Commissioner Aaron Green's here, I see him. And I'm sure there's others here that I just, with such a crowd, it's hard to see everyone, but we welcome everyone and being here today for this special occasion. Commissioner Botcher's here, they're telling me.
Eileen Roy.
There's lots of Commissioners here. Anyway, we thank you all for being here and former City Commissioners, former County Commissioners, all, thank you for being here today. We do have one order of business to take care of. Last week, we recognized the outgoing Chairman Paula Delaney, but if I could ask Commissioner Byerly maybe to join me over here at the side podium. As is our tradition, we like to recognize those that have provided extra service to the Commission, both as Chair and Vice Chair. In this past year, Commissioner Mike Byerly served as Chair, so on behalf of the Commission and the people of Alachua County, Commissioner Byerly, we want to recognize you for your services as Vice Chair on this just immediate past year. So thank you very much for your service there, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. As I indicated earlier, Chair Delaney, again over by the wall, we recognized her with her plaque last week. At this time is the time that it's culmination of a long election and the voters have spoken and so we're happy to have the oath administered to three Commissioners. We're going to begin first with Commissioner Mike Byerly, who has been re-elected to another term. So Commissioner Byerly, if you would be there in the well, we have the Honorable Buck Curtin, a Senior Judge of the Eighth Judicial Circuit, here to administer the oath. Absolutely. Any wife, family that would like to join Commissioner Byerly here in the well, please come forward.
Not just any wife.
Busy Byerly played a big part in all of this.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the government.
The Constitution and the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
That I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of County Commissioner.
The duties of County Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We thank his honor for coming over and taking part in this important ceremony. At this time, we call for Commissioner-elect Charles Chestnut IV and any family members that would like to join Mr. Chestnut. And also, at this time, the Honorable Walter Green, County Judge here in Alachua County, will administer the oath.
Good morning.
Good morning.
More complicated than what we had on.
Who do you want to hold the Bible? Place your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And the State of Florida.
And that I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the State.
Of the State.
And that I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully.
Faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of County Commissioner.
County Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
Which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. At this time, we would call for Commissioner-elect Robert Hutchinson. And the oath again will be administered by the Honorable Walter Green, County Judge.
If you'll raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
And that I am duly qualified.
And that I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties of County Commissioner.
The duties of County Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Commissioners, certainly on behalf of all the officers here, we welcome our two new Commissioners and welcome back Commissioner Byerly also. We look forward to working with all of you. At this time, the first official business of the new Commission is to the election and installation of your officers for the year 2012-2013. So this time, nominations for the Office of Chair of the Commission would be in order. Are there any nominations?
I would move that we put Commissioner Byerly in the unenviable task of being the Chair.
Second.
Mr. Commissioner Byerly has been nominated. Are there further nominations? Hearing none, without objection, we then will close nominations and ask that all those in favor of Commissioner Byerly serving as Chair for the coming year, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Congratulations, Commissioner Byerly. You are the Chair of the County Commissioner. At this time, nominations for Vice Chair of the County Commission are in order.
I'd like to make a nomination. Nomination of Lee Pinkerson, Commissioner Pinkerson, for Vice Chair.
Commissioner Pinkerson's been nominated. Are there further nominations?
Do I?
Further nominations. Hearing none, then without objection, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Commissioner Pinkerson serving as Vice Chair for the year 2012-13, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Congratulations, Commissioner Pinkerson, you are the Vice Chair. With that, we have elected our Chair and our Vice Chair and so at this time, I will pass the gavel to the new Chair and he will assume the Chair.
The hard part is done, I guess. The first item of business with the new Chair place, I guess, is remarks by the incoming Chair and Commissioners. First, I'd like to recognize, we'll start down this end, Commissioner Hutchinson, would you like to make any remarks?
Sure. Oh, come on. I make the shortest speeches in the world.
He unpacks his speech.
Yeah. First, I want to thank the voters of Alachua County for your confidence and that you've placed in me, or at least your confidence in the process. So getting elected is truly a gauntlet that, no matter what it looks like from the outside, is really a pretty good way to winnow candidates. Makes them get organized, makes them talk to a lot of people. We literally had thousands of conversations, a couple dozen forums, and did some serious fundraising and it's really a good process to get to where we are today. I've served with approximately 50 local elected officials, either served with them or observed them over about 40 years of public involvement and one of the things that I've observed about our local elected officials is nobody does it for the glory or the enjoyment of being up here. They all do it because they want to make a difference in the community. And I know that this Commission is no different. So we all got elected because there's something that we want to improve or fix. So because it's two days before Thanksgiving, I have some thanks to offer. And the first is to Commissioner Paula Delaney, who is my high school and college classmate and somebody who I've almost always worked for, sometimes worked against, but whose political instincts I've really never questioned because she's got vision, integrity, guts, and a good sense of humor. So thank you very much. I also want to thank my opponents. Ken Cornell and Jean Calderwood were two very hardworking, smart, and caring candidates who spurred me along, kept me awake at night, and whose many good ideas I've now incorporated into my own. So I think in this case plagiarism is allowed and I thank them for everything that they I want to thank my running mates, Commissioner Byerly and Chestnut. We ran as the Three Musketeers, or some people called us the Three Stooges. And we had sort of an every man for himself primary, but once the general election came along, we really worked extremely well together. These guys are great public servants and I think we have the right balance of passion and insights and stubbornness that will make us the next four years interesting. So gents, we won't always agree, but you know that I have your back. I also want to thank the Democratic Party leadership, in particular Chair John Ryskin and Vice Chair Evelyn Fox. Everything they were involved in seemed so organized that for a while I didn't even realize that they were Democrats. They pulled together a truly dedicated team of volunteers and they're really an inspiration to be associated with. My campaign staff was big and complicated. It included field marshals Brendan Rivard and Kyle Mitchell and tactician Nick Milder Brath. And these guys taught this old dog some new tricks about campaigning in the 21st century. And of course, there's my Central Intelligence Agency Doug Hornbeck and my Miss Money Penny, Lisa Holder. And my secret weapon, which are the oak hammock minions that my parental units got together and stuffed and stamped thousands of mail pieces. And then of course, there's Warren Nielsen, who did the grounds game pretty well and was sort of the head cheerleader in my kitchen cabinet, and you guys know who you are. And then the staff of Alachua Conservation Trust for covering for the last basically year as I was out on the campaign trail quite a bit. And to 1,100 financial contributors who backed my promises with their purse, thank you very much. And then to the many who worked on the campaign or displayed a sign of their political hopes with my nickname on it. So all of this was necessary to make what I think was a model grassroots campaign. And finally, I want to thank my partner in everything personal and political. Meg the Tree Lady has shared with me both the incredible joys of accomplishment and the deepest sorrows of tragic loss, but she remains relentlessly positive in our quest for greater justice and lasting peace. I was taught by a political mentor that the one thing a politician needs to do when they arrive on the scene, any scene, is either point with pride or view with concern. And in special circumstances, it's permissible to do both, so I'm going to do a little of each. In Alachua County, we can point with pride to our accomplishments in creating opportunities and equality for people of all races, genders, and sexual orientation, but we must always view with concern how much farther we must go, recognizing that the last steps in a long journey can be the most difficult but the most important. We can point with pride to having one of Florida's lowest unemployment rates during the recent recession and to having the highest per capita income in north central Florida, but we must also view with concern that more than 6% of our workforce is unemployed and many more are underemployed and that we have one of the largest income disparities in the nation for counties of our size. In Alachua County, we are proud to have more business incubators per capita than any place in the nation. And our economic development successes include recent infusions of venture capital that are the envy of the southeast, but we must also view with concern our recent losses in the manufacturing sector and the projected slow recovery in the construction trades. We know we have strong partners in the city commissions of Gainesville, Alachua, Archer, Hawthorne, High Springs, La Crosse, Micanopy, Newbury, and Waldo, but we must work proactively to keep a dialogue going because we're all tired of the occasionally dysfunctional relations of the past. And we know that we have innovative utility companies, yet we must learn to balance trust with power in their governance, especially as they face challenges from events largely outside of their control. And while we pride ourselves on being in the forefront of technological innovation with plans to build an economy based on, in part, on internet technologies, yet there's still a stubborn digital divide in the Gainesville urban area and throughout rural Alachua County, where today the only available internet connection works at dial-up speed, which is no longer sufficient to receive many web-based services critical to participating in 21st century economy and civic life. I've visited third world countries recently whose internet and wireless communications are faster and more reliable than many areas in our own community. We can point with pride to weekly reports of great biomedical achievements coming from our university, hospitals, and entrepreneurial startups in areas such as gene therapy, tissue culture, transplants, and pharmacology, yet we must be concerned that so many in our community find it difficult to obtain basic healthcare services and the funding for our own homegrown local program is nearly exhausted. We can point with pride to the residential and commercial developments of recent years that have created truly special neighborhoods and shopping areas, but we must guard against regulatory overreach, as many of these places have thrived in spite of regulations that often do not evolve as fast as the marketplace. We must continue focusing on redevelopment. In Alachua County, we can point with pride to our land conservation achievements. Just over a decade ago, all we had was a wishful stack of petitions and a theoretical map. Today, we have protected 21,000 acres, but we must view with concern our lack of a water ethic and the political will to protect our signature springs and the aquifer from overpumping and contamination. And to do our part to reduce greenhouse gas emissions that contribute to global climate change. And in Alachua County, we can point with pride to our community's strong core of social service providers, government, nonprofit, and faith-based, but must view with concern the number of people, including returning veterans, the increasing elderly population, the homeless, and single-parent households who are draining our reservoir of compassion and straining the political will of nearly half of our electorate to provide for it. And we are all proud of our public employees who are at the top of their game, yet for more than half a decade, we have rewarded them with continued austerity measures and wonder that morale has suffered while viewing with concern how many talented public servants are moving on. And we have five constitutional officers in Alachua County who have more years of public service between them than at any time in our history and who are truly team players despite our government structure that encourages fiefdoms, yet we must be concerned about a succession plan for these offices as they inevitably transition in the next decade to new leadership. And then there are our roads, which we can take pride in having maintained on a shoestring budget for decades, but which during these same decades, we have failed to muster the political leadership necessary to convince the electorate to support an adequate level of maintenance. We can be very proud of how our community has come together in the past decade to reduce the euthanasia of companion animals from 8,000 to less than 2,000 per year, but we must understand that the most difficult animals to save are the remaining ones. So please adopt a rescue animal and help the organizations that provide low-cost spay-neuter services. And we should pride ourselves in the great law enforcement agencies and excellent criminal justice system we have developed, but these are not investments and so we must view with concern every dollar that is spent here rather than in our educational institutions, for it's cheaper on the front end to nurture and educate a child than it is to incarcerate and rehabilitate an adult. We must always view with concern the legislature whenever they are in session. And strive to find something for them to do that we can join with them in pointing with pride to. In Alachua County, we should be proud of that, we should be proud that we are leading in so many areas of governments and we should be spurred on by the knowledge that we are a special place and comfortable that we are destined to experiment with new ideas, but we need to be humble in that we believe in what we believe government can do and get out of the way of whatever's possible. So I'm done pointing with pride and viewing with concern for the moment. I want to finish with my own practices of governments, which I worked on over a decade ago. I thought when I was first elected, that having a lot of ideas about how to change things was important and that I was a smart guy who could look at a problem and solve it with my own wits and that everybody I talked to would be providing me with good and useful information. It took me a while, but with the guidance of many people and plenty of mistakes along the way, I eventually learned that the best thing a local elected official could do was to listen as long and attentively as possible before deciding how an issue is dealt with. So my promise to the citizens, to the staff, to my fellow Commissioners, is that I will do my best to come to every decision facing us with an open mind and unfettered allegiances and that I will promise nothing until I've heard from county staff, our advisory boards, the citizens, and fellow Commissioners. And what I've discovered is that when I make a vote under those circumstances, I never regret my participation in the decision whichever way the vote falls. Thank you for indulging me and I look forward to the next four years.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson. Commissioner Chestnut?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank all of you all for being here today. First, I'd like to say good morning. First, I want to thank God for this opportunity. Secondly, I want to thank the Alachua County voters, my family, Tiffany, Charlie, Cynthia, Dad, looks like he's asleep.
He's thinking.
He's thinking, okay. I want to thank my campaign manager, Nick Milder Brath. I want to thank the volunteers on the campaign. Without you, I wouldn't be here. So again, thank you all. It's important to be here today. On the campaign trail, we talked about Alachua County's at a crossroads. And the crossroads was to either move backwards or to move forward. And it appears that the voters of Alachua County said, "We want to move forward." And I think that that is the right decision. I want to thank the voters for their confidence and trust they've shown to me during this campaign. Folks, I really love Alachua County. I love the people. I love the character of Alachua County. And on the campaign trail, I talked about job creation, a responsible budget that meets all the needs of the people. I talked about a safe environment. I talked about protecting seniors, veterans, children, and families. The next four years, I will work hard to make those things possible and to make our life better in Alachua County. We can do great things by working together as a community. For instance, some years ago, when I was on the City Commissioner, as a City Commissioner, we had a thing called the Vision of Plan East Gainesville. We talked about the future of Plan East Gainesville and I think that that's important, that still is important. When I look at Alachua County and I look at the eastern portion of Alachua County, there hasn't been much development or anything on the east side of town. We brought a Walmart, but there's nothing else. In this community, I don't know about some people, but I have nothing against West Gainesville, but I have to travel to West Gainesville to eat, I have to travel to West Gainesville to shop. Something is wrong. Why don't we have those same amenities on the east side of town or the east side of the county? That's important. That is very important. We need economic development on both sides of the county, west, east, north, and south. That is important for this county. We talked about using the current fairgrounds as a business park. I will champion that initiative. I think it's important because it's a catalyst for job creation in our community and it will improve the economy in Alachua County. It is also important that we help restore citizens' confidence and trust in county government. It has to be, government has to be more efficient, effective, by cutting waste, by eliminating Government has to be more efficient, effective, by cutting waste, by eliminating duplicate processes, and the most important thing, we have to champion and want to have intergovernmental relationships which are critical to the future of Alachua County. County government has to continue to foster a better working relationship with the city of Gainesville and the small municipalities. This county and all of the cities must work together to create a comprehensive transportation plan for the future of Alachua County. I support county staff and have the utmost confidence in their ability to help move this county forward. We have to stand as one county. Y'all mighty quiet, but we have to.
Repeat it.
We have to. We have to stand as one county, and we have to move forward during these... During these tough economic times. As we close this campaign cycle, we must now come together and set aside our differences and focus on the future of Alachua County. I'm going to say, "Let's get to work." And I would like to say, "I am deeply honored to have the privilege to continue to serve the citizens of Alachua County." And again, I would like to thank the voters, my family, my campaign staff, and volunteers, and may God bless Alachua County.
I will continue my tradition of very brief acceptance speeches. I'll be happy to hear. Mostly, what I feel this morning is gratitude. Thank you all for being here this morning to wish us well. Thank you to all the people of Alachua County for electing the five of us to represent them. We represent a very diverse spectrum of ideas and values here, and we will thoroughly consider every issue that comes before us, and I'm looking forward to that. I want to thank everyone who worked so long and so hard on my campaign. I'm tempted to begin naming names, but I won't, because I wouldn't know where to stop, and I'm afraid I would leave someone out, with one exception. I want to thank Goldie Schwartz, who has been our treasurer all four of our campaigns. She's done so much work. They love her at the supervisor's office, and as we like to say, no one has gone to jail, so she's done her job very well. And lastly, I want to thank my wife, my beautiful bride, who... Thank you for loving me and sustaining me and enduring me for the last eight months. I promise I will make it up to you. She worked so hard on this campaign to bring us where we are this morning, so thank you, Bizzy. And with that, we have our work cut out for us, and I'm looking forward to getting to it, and I hope you will all join us at the reception later. We're going to hear a few comments from the two Commissioners who are currently seated. And with that, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Baird. Anything you'd like to say this morning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, and welcome, everybody, and it is exciting to see here a whole new group and a new group that's going to work hard. I did write a few things, just to make sure that I wanted to communicate a few thoughts. First, congratulations to our new county Commissioners and constitutional officers. Buddy Irby, Mr. Crepo, Von Frazier, Pam Carpenter, and I look forward to working with them to help the citizens of Alachua County prosper. I'm thrilled that we can continue our excellent job in public safety with the guidance of our newly re-elected Sheriff Sadie Darnell. She's just done such a wonderful job, I want to congratulate her, her whole staff, all the protection that we have in this great county of ours. And I want to just review just a few of the goals that I was thinking for next year, and it's going to be the Cliff version, actually, of Commissioner Hutchinson. That was a great summary, and Commissioner Chestnut and Commissioner Barley of the thoughts that you have for the county. And I think one of the main things is, again, to improve our infrastructure. One of the main roles of government is to have a good infrastructure. We've heard so much of the folks that are so concerned about our roads, and with the tight budget that we have and the Surtax not having passed, we're going to have to dig deep and dig hard to make sure that that infrastructure is still a very good component of this fine community of ours. The other main focus, and I'm just so thrilled to hear that the emphasis on these acceptance speeches are jobs. What my main focus would be is to fast-track wonderful producing job companies, but more importantly, Plum Creek. A number of you, I've seen you at some of these meetings that we've had with the Plum Creek community. The opportunities are so vast, and they're so exceptional, especially for the east side, especially for those that truly need it. It's really going to be very exciting to work with them to fast-track that whole program there, that is going to be such a great opportunity. And then, of course, our whole utility electric, it's just such an important aspect of so many people's lives. It will affect the most vulnerable in our community and those with limited income in our business sector. I know we can all work together to make sure that the residents of this fine county will have the best of everything, and that also includes the least cost in things. So, I know we can do a great job together. I'm looking forward to working with all of you, and of course, still working with three of us. It's just going to be great to add two more new heads, and I see Commissioner Bradley here, and again, it was a real treat having you, and Commissioner Delaney, it was a real treat having you here. It'll be different, that's for sure. I need another girl around here. I made a lot of testosterone around here, but we'll try and calm them down a little bit. Yeah, right. I'm one of them. Anyway, I want to thank God for this wonderful community of ours, and also to everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Commissioner Baird. Commissioner Pinkison, would you like to say something?
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and, you know, Mike and I do have our differences, but this will be very similar in that I'm not going to talk very long. And I want to say congratulations to everybody. I know it seemed like this campaign season went on forever, and the caveat to that is I was really glad that I didn't have to do it. So, congratulations. It was nice to hear that economic development is important, and I would hope that we would characterize a portion of that to the economic development for people that don't have masters and PhDs. You know, only a small minority of people, you know, less than 50% go to college, so we have to remember the other end of the spectrum, and I would hope very much that a component of that will be that we do whatever we can to make sure that our children are ready when they start school, because that will give them a heads up or, you know, a leg up as far as being able to be competitive and to be successful as they go through their lives. The last thing is, the Florida Association of Counties is very important, and I would hope that they have their first... They have a meeting next week, and I would hope that everybody on the commission would be as active in that as possible, because they do serve a purpose, if not to further necessarily what the counties thinks are important, but to counter, and that's probably their biggest attribute, is that they counter a lot of the legislation that comes through that works against the counties. So, hopefully, we'll see you there next week in Sarasota. So, thank you very much. Congratulations, and I really look forward to the next two years, anyway. So, thank you.
Commissioner Chestnut would like to be recognized. He forgot something he wanted to say.
I forgot to recognize former County Commissioner Rodney Long and former Commissioner Winston Bradley. If you all didn't know, Winston Bradley is my second cousin, which is my father's first cousin, and so I did not want to pass you guys by and not recognize you and for your service to Alachua County, and I think that that's important. I know I have some big shoes to fill, but that's my goal, to make Alachua County one of the greatest counties in the state of Florida, and so thank you, guys, for your service. Thank you.
Commissioner Hutchinson also forgot something he'd like to say.
Well, just there's one item of business I haven't quite figured out, and that is, how does one lobby for positions on different boards and committees that I know... Do you appoint?
I'll help you.
Okay. Because I can't ask you, because that would be out of the sunshine, so...
Technically, the Chair, I believe, has responsibility for making appointments, but of course, we will do that collaboratively, and that'll be on our first agenda, I suppose.
And, Mr. Chair, each of the Commissioners will be given a packet where you can identify the boards and committees on which you want to be represented, and then the Chair will make the decision based on that information. So, you'll be getting that today, probably, or it's in your office waiting for you. It's all prepared and ready to go.
Thank you. And your light is on, Mr. Manager. Did you want to say something at this time?
Just real quickly, I wanted to remind, congratulate the new Commissioners and the Chair, and to remind you that our students from PK Young, as we perhaps go back into the other room for refreshments, they would like the opportunity to come and shake your hands and meet and greet you as part of that. So, they had to leave, I think, by 10:30, but we should have enough time to allow that to happen.
And could you remind us all where and when the reception is?
And Grace Knight, when we're done here.
It's right around the corner, by the way, at the other end of this hall, soon as we're done. So, I hope to see you all there. Mr. Turney, your light is on as well.
Mr. Chair, congratulations to everybody, and as the Commissioners are actually thinking about what boards they want to serve on, I see former Commissioner Bradley over there. He's the walk-around expert on the canvassing board now. Which is a very important function, and thank you for serving, and that's very important. Of course, the next big time is two years.
Thank you, Mr. Turney. Mr. Clark, is there anything else on our agenda this morning? I hope to see you all then in the reception. This is probably going to be the shortest meeting this board will have in the next two years, so thank you all for coming, and we'll see you soon.